Welcome, everyone. I'm going to call the August 10th Special City Council Meeting to order. Tonight's meeting is a remote meeting, so before we go on to the agenda items, I'm just going to pass on a few introductory remarks. On March 6th, I issued an emergency proclamation. Declaring a civil emergency in the city due to COVID-19 outbreak. On March 24th, the governor issued Proclamation 20-28 prohibiting meetings that fall under the Open Public Meetings Act, such as our city council meetings, from being conducted in person. This prohibition has been extended through September 1st. Tonight's meeting will be held entirely remotely. The meeting will be recorded, streamed live, and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting or make comments. Many of you signed up in advance to make comments, and if anyone is on the call who did not sign up but would like to speak, please press *3 on your phone, and we will add you to the speakers list. At this point in time, we're going to take a quick moment and do a roll call of the council members in attendance, so please stay here when I call your name. Councilmember D. Michelle?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Council President Hunt?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Mart?
Here.
Thank you. Who is still on mute, but I can see him. I'm just going to wait for a voice verification. Councilmember Ray?
Oh, there we go. Are you able to hear us, and are you able to acknowledge your attendance?
I think Chris can hear, but I'm not sure that he can speak.
Can you try again? I've unmuted you.
Councilmember Ray? We'll take a pause for a second. I'm just going to check in with Councilmember Walsh.
Here.
And back to Councilmember Ray. Are you able to speak with us yet?
I think we're toggling opposite on the sound, so let me try his line again here. Councilmember Ray, you have an open line? We can connect, we can have our IT person connect with him.
Thank you. Very frustrating. This is the not joyous part of remote meetings.
Yeah, I'm here.
Ah.
Sorry about that.
Nicely done. Thank you. That is all seven council members here this evening. We also have various city staff that are participating in tonight's meeting, including City Administrator Bob Kowits, Police Chief Scott Baerbaum, Parks and Community Services Director Jeff Watling, Human Services Coordinator Monica Negrilla, Senior Human Resources Analyst Lauren Knox, Economic Development Manager Jen Davis Hayes, City Clerk Tina Eggers, City Attorney Jim Haney, and there may also be other city staff in attendance. For those members of the public on the call, welcome. The clerk or I will call on you to make comments when we reach that portion of the agenda, and I do want to go over a few meeting guidelines for tonight. So for all meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking, and mute your microphone when not speaking. If you are also streaming the live video feed, please turn the sound off as there is a delay. For council members, please continue to use the chat to indicate when you wish to speak. Please identify yourself before you ask a question, make a motion, or second a motion, or participate in debate. So the next item on our agenda is public comment, and for those providing public comments, please ensure that you direct those comments to the whole council and not to individuals. And while this is not a question-and-answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. So when recognized, unmute your microphone, and *6 may be an option for you on your phone. State your name, address, and relationship to the city. Speak clearly and pause frequently. Limit your comments to five minutes. Remute your microphone when done. And if you do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will need to proceed, and you are encouraged to rejoin the meeting if you're able to. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior is not permitted, and if a speaker is out of order, I will ask them to stop and mute their microphone. If a speaker does not comply, I may direct staff to mute their microphone. And if a disruption to the meeting occurs and order cannot be restored, I may direct staff to remove you from the call. Citizens' comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process, and the city council and my administration takes these comments very seriously. We thank you for taking this time to address us. City Clerk, could you please identify the first person who signed up to speak this evening?
Yes, we have Nicholas Kelly. I'm unmuting you on my end. You have the floor and can proceed.
Thank you very much. My name is Nicholas Kelly. I'm an Issaquah resident. I live on East Sunset Way. And my comment is essentially regarding the action plan. I think that the "eight can't wait," there's absolutely nothing wrong with those reforms, and they're a great thing to check in on about the health of a police department and therefore the health of the community. But I do think facing, from my understanding, the entire action plan around where Issaquah Police Department is at with the "eight can't wait" is a real artificial narrowing of both looking into what is going well and what is not going well, and also how to protect the community better. I think in terms of use of force, a relationship with the community, there's one major straightforward thing that can be done, which is the use of police body cameras. I think that's rapidly becoming the norm. I'm sure it will be the norm across the country within a few years. And to not be looking at what the cost will be and how quickly that can be implemented here, and perhaps that work is being done, but I don't know about it, I think that is the most straightforward thing, that's transparent, it protects police officers, it protects citizens, it encourages better community policing, and when something does happen, you understand what happened right there. So that is my comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nikov. City Clerk, who do we have up next? Thank you. Sarah Jerome?
Hi, everyone. My name is Sarah Jerome. Thank you for the work you're doing. I'm really excited the city is doing this work. I'm on East Sunset Way as well. My comment is about the process for this action plan so far. To be completely honest, I'm a little bit shocked by the process and the inequities that are occurring within the process. The city has chosen against publicly consulting with even one progressive anti-racist policy organization, such as the ACLU, King County Equity Now, or Black Lives Matter King County, during the creation of this plan so far. While there has been a meeting with a local volunteer grassroots progressive group, which was an excellent choice by the city, that is not the same as creating a truly comprehensive and transparent process within municipal government. Progressive voices are getting sidelined as the city consults with the police department without also consulting publicly with a progressive policy expert group. For this process to be equitable, an action step should really be added to this process to ensure a progressive policy expert organization, such as the ACLU, publicly provides a critique of this plan, for example, through a public hearing. The police have weighed in, but more voices must be included in this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. City Clerk, who's up next? Thank you. Next, we have Kate Call, and I don't see the number that she signed up to speak with listed. However, if you are on the line, through a different number, you can press *3 on your phone, and we can come back to you. Next on the list, again, I do not see this number there, Kimberly, with a 678-360 number. If you are on the line, you can press *3, and we can be identified. I do see a hand raised, so I'll try that line. And the hand has been lowered, so I'm not certain. Again, press *3 if you'd like to raise your hand, and we can call on you. I'll move to Paula. She's at the 425-392 number, and let me, give me a moment here to unmute you. Thank you, Paula. You're unmuted, and you have the floor.
Hi, I'm Paula. I've been living here for 30-plus years, and I'm over by the, I'm on Clark Street. Okay? I'm speaking on behalf of many residents, I believe, around this part. We do not want the pattern of Seattle and Portland to manifest itself here in Issaquah. We have painfully witnessed the failed strategy of appeasement. It doesn't work. Appeasement allows discord, destruction, and it can lead to injury or death. Instead, Issaquah needs to stand strong and hold our ground. It needs to increase the police presence on our streets and roads. We need to hire more skilled officers, including those who have been laid off by their cities. Increase their wages, and give them the tools they need to be effective. That's where I want my tax dollars to go. And to rely on neighboring police forces to help out when we get some ongoing problem here, they have their own situation and their own things to deal with. I recommend calling in the National Guard if we end up in a mess. The sooner the better to reduce loss. And what can we do as individuals? Do teach us how to protect our homes and businesses. Tell us how we can be of aid to our police department during unrest. Would it help to build some sort of citizen response teams? We could model it after the structure of Citizen Core, that instantly responds to natural disasters. And lastly, I don't particularly want to move. I like Issaquah, so I'm hoping you'll give your full support to our awesome police for all of us. I do thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, Paula. City Clerk, is there anyone else on that has raised their hand or would like to speak this evening?
Yes. Kate Call, I see that you are on the line. I've unmuted you, and you have the floor.
Thank you. My name is Kate. I want to speak about the Issaquah Police Action Plan. I've lived within the city limits for about 14 years, and in the Issaquah School District since 1989. I have done civil rights work for over 25 years, before, during, and after law school. I have held appointive and elective public offices. I'm retired, and for seven years have been a volunteer to help the less fortunate who live in our area. I have two addages to recommend tonight. The first is, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. I do not see that our police department is broken. Furthermore, police officers are human beings, highly admirable, given the profession they have chosen. This is not a good time to undermine their morale. You only have to look 160 miles south at Portland and 15 miles west at Seattle to see we need our police much more than usual. The other adage I recommend is haste makes waste. I would hate to see us jump on a bandwagon or follow some trend without knowing more. On June 29th, retired police officer Stan Conrad said to the city council, "We should not be a guinea pig. We should watch what happens in other places. Don't dabble and experiment in our community." There is serious merit in what he says. I would also, like Paula, like to encourage that we, could we have a program where residents are trained on how to protect their homes or businesses in the event an unruly crowd should show up on our streets? And is there anything that we can do, like training we could go to, to be able to help our police department if they are faced with a large unruly crowd? We could be like Minutemen, be on the spot to help while awaiting the National Guard or aid from nearby police departments. I see no end in sight, alas, for the troubles in Portland and Seattle. We have to be ready to cope with a possible, with a possible spread of the troubles. Do we have a plan? I wish the city council would talk about it. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Kate. City Clerk, can you confirm if there's anyone else that would like to address the council this evening?
Yes. Catherine Stukel, let me unmute you, and you have the floor.
Thank you so much. My name is Catherine. I've lived in Issaquah with my family since 1998. I've gone through the Issaquah School District with my family. We're business owners. We live in Old Town. I am asking that, first of all, we support the police, our Issaquah Police Department wholeheartedly, and I'm asking you to vote no on approving and implementing the Police Accountability Equity and Human Services Action Plan. We are in the middle of a pandemic. It's summer. It's not the best nor the fair time for community input on something that's this important, and I feel that you've been rushing into it. Actually, you have been rushing into it. It's not that I feel, because you are trying to move it forward so quickly. So I'm asking the administration and council, again, to slow down this process. Please take time to properly and adequately gather the needed community input before moving forward with this plan. Waiting also gives Issaquah a chance to study what other communities are doing, what's worked and what's not working, such as what Kate and Paula have mentioned. In the financial section of the plan, I quote, "Costs associated with this action plan will be identified as each initiative is more further developed," unquote. Prior to COVID, the city was already over budget. The city has declared there is a financial emergency, and so while the administration is working hard to lessen the financial impact of the pandemic, it still does exist. Fiscal responsibility is a critical area that all citizens expect from our governing body. How can you approve and adopt a plan without knowing the financial effects of this proposed changes ahead of time? We as citizens of Issaquah hold you accountable in all areas, especially in the financial area. To review, I'm asking that you, one, please wait, take time to do it right, slow down, do not pass this plan tonight. Identify exactly what the problems are, if any, and then offer many opportunities for community input. And, two, I'm asking for fiscal responsibility connected to this plan, and have the costs identified prior to approving it. I ask administration and council to continue to support and respect our police and provide them the necessary tools needed to do their job to protect our persons and property, prevent criminal activity, and maintain a peaceful and safe Issaquah. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Catherine. City Clerk, is there anyone else that has signed up to comment this evening?
Hi. No, there aren't, but I did want to loop back, and it's Kimberly. If you're on the line and calling from a different number, you can press *3, and your hand will be raised. I'll give you a moment. And I see no action. That would conclude the open public comment.
Thank you. So the majority, all of the public comment this evening actually was on Issaquah's action plan for policing and equity. There were questions about why are we only using the "eight can't wait" as a check-in? Is that not an artificial narrowing down? And a request for body cameras. There were also a request for outside independent review of the plan. Several people tonight commented on making sure that we give the police the tools, the wages, the training, and use the reliance on other existing neighboring police forces to make sure that we're safe in our community, and we consider a citizens' corps of what would citizens do in an emergency that would be assistive to the police and help make, maintain a feeling of safety within their community. And also a request not to endorse the plan this evening, but to take more time to do more problem definition, receive more community input, and assess the costs of implementing the plan. So I thank all of you for coming in this evening and presenting those comments to council. Very, very helpful. As a reminder, I just want to let everybody know, if there's additional information that you want to send in, please make sure to email citycouncil@issaquahwa.gov email address. In addition, any comments received by email on tonight's agenda topics will be acknowledged by our council president, Council President Hunt, under the relevant agenda item. The next item on the agenda this evening is AB 7999, Issaquah Police Accountability Equity and Human Services Action Plan. The request before the council this evening is as an endorsement of the plan. This item was last before council at the June 29th council meeting. At that time, the council directed the administration to return with a final plan, which we are doing at this evening's meeting. So before we hand this over to our city administrator for his presentation, I just had a few opening remarks I wanted to share. So following the tragic death of George Floyd in Minneapolis, people across the country and in our own community, including on the steps of Issaquah City Hall, have rightfully demonstrated against racial injustice throughout our country. Black Lives Matters demonstrators have asked that we take this moment to talk about what we need to do as a community to recognize racial bias and make changes to eliminate the disproportionate damage it is doing to community members of color. At your June 15th meeting, you heard from many community members expressing concern on these issues. Also at that meeting, our police chief, Chief Baerbaum, and other city staff reported on city training policies, procedures, and programs focused on racial equity with a specific emphasis on the Issaquah Police Department and Municipal Court. In response to the conversation on June 15th, the city council held a special meeting on June 29th to once again listen to comments from the public on these important issues. Also at this meeting, I presented my draft Police Accountability Equity and Human Services Action Plan, and announced plans to solicit feedback and comments from the public during the month of July. I did hold two community meetings by video conference. The first was on July 22nd and was hosted by the Issaquah Community Equity and Inclusion Group. This grassroots organization of interested residents has been meeting informally for the last year to discuss the issues of equity in Issaquah. The second meeting, on July 29th, was a general community meeting sponsored by the city. Chief Baerbaum, the city administrator Bob Kowits, and I presented the draft plan and answered questions. Listening to the many members of the community who spoke at these four meetings, there is a desire for change on how the city provides services that are equitable and fair to all. The community wants to see a reimagined police department that serves the public using a variety of different tactics and initiatives. Many community members spoke of their appreciation of the work of the police department and expressed concern about any negative impact that proposed changes could have on the police force. I believe we must move forward with the initiatives outlined in this action plan to address these calls for change. Each of the plan's actions are focused on key themes that I heard from the community: transparency, public trust, accountability, partnerships, and equity. These changes cannot effectively be done overnight, but I believe this action plan provides a roadmap for the next 18 months to move forward. The cornerstone of the plan is a review of the police department's budget and operations. This review will include all department functions, but will focus on how best to incorporate dedicated professional mental health and behavioral professionals into day-to-day department operations. In addition, other areas to be evaluated will include the use of school resource officers, current community policing strategies, introduction of body cameras, review of equipment purchases, and review of jail operations. Policies and procedures to be reviewed include enhancing the use of force and reporting, the normal and formal police complaint process, recruitment and hiring practices, policies for discipline and termination, training programs, local fines and fees, and departmental training programs. The action plan also includes the valuation of a police review community board or commission. In addition to the areas of police accountability, this action plan also outlines plans to move forward with additional equity training for all city staff, the evaluation of resident review of equity and human services initiatives in the city, and the development of a racial equity toolkit. Initial recommendations from this review will be included in my proposed fiscal year 2021 budget. The review will continue through 2021, and additional recommendations for changes will be included in the fiscal year 2022 budget. I want to thank the members of the Issaquah community for coming together to share their thoughts and suggestions about this proposed action plan. I've heard many stories in the past several weeks from community members that have opened my eyes to the challenges and hardships faced by many of our residents. I believe this action plan is a step forward to making Issaquah a more welcoming place for all, and I do want to say how proud I am to see people come speak both for and against, and to modifying a plan on something that they feel very passionate about. The public comment we received at all of these meetings and in written format was very respectfully and well-presented, and I believe we've had a very good and robust conversation on this. So I thank everyone who participated, either in a remote meeting or in writing to the city council. It's been very beneficial to us. So now I'd like to ask City Administrator Bob Kowits to walk through the revised draft action plan. City Administrator?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Good evening. Would like to ask that Tina bring up the plan so we can walk through it for you. The red line, or in this case, blue line of what has been added is so noted there, and again, in the very first part of the preamble, as the mayor mentioned, you know, the plan's actions are focused on transparency, public trust, accountability, partnerships, and equity, all themes that were heard during the public meetings that we've had over the last month. As you're aware, the plan is divided up into three areas: a short term with initiatives to be completed by the end of August, a medium term initiatives to be completed prior to the end of 2020, and then a more long term for initiatives that would be completed during 2021. I want to just touch on some of the changes that we're proposing based on the community impact that we've heard. Under the short term, 1, 2, and 3 remain as is. Just a note regarding the "eight can't wait," really the focus here has been the "eight can't wait" model policy on use of force, and through the community meetings, we've been very careful to talk about the use of force policy compared to the "eight can't wait" model policy. Over time, "eight can't wait" has taken on some broader initiatives, but that's really not been the focus of this action plan, and instead it's been a focus on the model policy for use of force. The department reporting portion has not changed. The city council equity training, we're working right now to find a date for the city council if we're not able to have a date by the end of August. We hope to do that the first part of September. A new number four under short term is action plan reporting, something that we heard from many members of the community and members of the city council, was the importance of accountability with the plan, and so we are adding a specific portion that there'll be quarterly reporting regarding the implementation of the plan each quarter through the end of next year, and those reports will also be posted on the city's website. The second area of initiatives are medium term to be completed by December 31st next year. The first here is the police department budget and operations review. Again, Mayor Polly and her comments kind of went through a number of the issues that would be looked at. Since we are about six weeks away from presenting the mayor's 2021 proposed budget, there is a limited amount of issues we'll be able to address for the budget in '21, but we will do that, and that will be included as part of the mayor's proposed budget in '21. We expect there to be additional work that will need to be done as we review different portions of the department. That will continue through fiscal '21, and we would expect to come back to the council with additional items of consideration through '21, including to be included in the '22 proposed budget that you'll see sometime next fall. Moving on to the next group under medium term. Number two remains the same. Number three remains the same regarding use of force review and reporting and complaint process. We've made a change on training. There was some concern expressed during the public comment that it was important to look at equity training specifically for the police department now, and take a little bit more time for a broader review of police department training programs. So the item that it was marked number four has moved to the long-term area. The new number four is regarding police equity training, that the department would budget and schedule eight hours of equity training for all department staff specific to police operations. This would be in addition to the department staff participating in a citywide training. of next year, and those reports will also be posted on the city's website. The second area of initiatives are medium term to be completed by December 31 next year. The first here is the police department budget and operations review. Again, Mayor Polly and her comments kind of went through a number of the issues that would be looked at. Since we are about six weeks away from presenting the mayor's 2021 proposed budget, there is a limited amount of issues we'll be able to address for the budget in '21, but we will do that, and that will be included as part of the mayor's proposed budget in '21. We expect there to be additional work that will need to be done as we review different portions of the department. That will continue through fiscal '21, and we would expect to come back to the council with additional items of consideration through '21, including to be included in the '22 proposed budget that you'll see sometime next fall. Moving on to the next group under medium term. Number 2 remains the same. Number 3 remains the same regarding use of force review and reporting and complaint process. We've made a change on training. There was some concern expressed during the public comment that it was important to look at equity training specifically for the police department now and take a little bit more time for a broader review of police department training programs. So the item that it was marked number 4 has moved to the long-term area. The new number 4 is regarding police equity training, that the department would budget and schedule eight hours of equity training for all department staff specific to police operations. This would be in addition to the department staff participating in a citywide training scheduled for all city employees. We've also added number 5, review of police department recruitment and hiring role of the Civil Service Commission. This was under the longer term, to be done during the course of '21. We heard during the community meetings the importance of reviewing of the recruitment and hiring practices sooner, and so that is proposed to be moved up to be completed by the end of the current calendar year. As we go through this page, the data collection and reporting remains the same. The use of school resource officers, again, there were some questions about timing of this, and I think as we have mentioned at a previous meeting, the city has had initial discussions with the school district regarding the evaluation of the school resource officers. They, the district, has said that their plan is to begin a review with a school board retreat that they're planning for later in the month of August. Given all that's going on with the school district, including not having in-person classes in the fall, I think it will be important for us to continue to follow up with the district. That will not happen in the next 30 or 60 days, but our hope is that we would have an opportunity for further discussions during the balance of the fiscal year and that any kind of decisions will be made between this district and the city by the end of the year. City council, police department information sharing has not changed. Development, beginning implementation of a citywide equity training curriculum was not changed. The number 9, we received a lot of comment regarding the ability of the Human Services Commission to take on a reevaluation of their role, and so that is something that we have changed to a number 10, which is to evaluate resident review of equity and human services initiatives. You'll see an additional change here in red highlighted in yellow. Councilmember De Michele today asked that this language be included, and Mayor Polly has agreed, so we've gone ahead and included that here right now. So let me read the whole paragraph. "The Human Services Commission will be charged with evaluating current resident review of the city's equity and human services initiative, review its membership and bylaws to ensure residents with lived experience, non-inclusion, and/or discrimination are included in a meaningful way, and make recommendations to the mayor and city council on best next steps. This may include changes to the current scope of work of the Human Services Commission, changes to the scope of work of other city boards and commissions, the creation of additional city board or commission to address these matters, and/or collaboration with other existing community organizations." So the administration is proposing to accept Councilmember De Michele's change. That is language that was in the previous paragraph talking about the human services review, so we'd like to include that. Also, I had a conversation this afternoon with Councilmember Walsh, who's expressed some concern regarding the timing for this. It's a fairly heavy lift. The Human Services Commission is busy with other matters as well in the fall, and I believe will be her suggestion to move that under long term, and certainly the administration has no objections to that. Then number 11, under medium term, review citywide human services staffing and contracting resources. Again, this is something that we are actively looking at as part of the '21 proposed budget, and so this is ongoing, and we expect to be able to have some recommendations to the council as part of the proposed budget that you'll see at the end of September. Under long term, number 1 was moved to medium term, so that is why it's deleted here. The new number 1 regarding police department policies for discipline and termination is unchanged. Number 2, the review of police department training programs, again, is moved from medium term to long term, and so in the medium term, we'll focus on some additional equity training for the police department, but during '21, continue to look at all police department training programs. Number 3, number 4, number 5, number 6 are all left unchanged from the initial draft. And then I think on the final page, number 7 regarding citywide policies and procedures using the racial equity toolkit. So Madam Mayor, members of the council, this, I think, gives a quick overview of the proposed changes that the administration is supporting this evening based on the feedback that we've received from members of the council and members of the community. We will be working closely on the short and medium term items, certainly those medium term items that we look to conclude by the end of 2020, and also looking as far as the budget implications, certainly the citywide training, police department training, those things, human services staffing, will all be budget issues for the '21 budget, and so we are actively working on those. We're working on the budget, and we'll have specific recommendations in the mayor's proposed budget that you'll see on September 29. Happy to answer any questions, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, city administrator Bob Kwitz. Before we go to questions, I'll give folks a few minutes to sign up in the chat. I'd like to get council president Hunt to summarize any comments received from the public on this topic by email. Council president?
Thank you. This is council president Hunt, and we have received a number of comments, about 15 comments, from members of the community on this topic, and these are comments that we've received between now and the last time that council discussed this topic. We received a comment that, from this, from this community member, that they felt the Human Services Commission had a lot on their plate already, and so to add, to add a overview of this equity and police accountability would be too much to add to their plate, and wanted to consider increasing the human services budget and, as well as, consider increasing the staffing of the city to address human services, and felt that the human services budget as it is now was inadequate. And then was also supportive of having a staff position such as a social worker that would work with the police department to address concerns that might be best addressed by a mental health professional or a social worker. And then also, training should be a top priority. We received an email, several emails actually, related to one another, in which the residents called for Issaquah to become a nonviolent city and references to the Nonviolent Cities Project with more information about what that would entail. We received an email with support for police to have funding for incorporation, again, of mental health officials that would work with them or social workers that would work with them to de-escalate situations and partnership. And then also, this resident was also very concerned about individuals experiencing homelessness and what we would do for individuals experiencing homelessness to help them get back on their feet and work their way out of homelessness. We received an email in which the resident wanted to make sure that we had balanced reporting and reported that people have been commenting and emailing on both sides of defunding versus keeping the same funding and also increasing funding. So we have received all of those, all of those suggestions, and this resident wanted to make sure that we explained that and reported that we have received all three of those. And then we received a email from, several emails from residents in which they had examples from both other countries of how policing works in other countries and the benefits of doing things in other ways such as in England and Finland, as well as other cities that have had success transforming police departments across the nation. We had a resident who advocated in support of the peaceful protests that have been occurring in front of Issaquah City Hall in recent months, and at least four emails that were generally supportive of our police department, and also felt that the police are like an insurance policy where we need to have them when they were, should we have an emergency and in support and appreciation of our police. And an email against defunding, flatly against defunding, and then also in support of reform but not defunding, and also in support of increasing funding for education because this resident felt that inequities in education lead to additional inequities. And then lastly, we received an email from a resident which, again, referenced the Kahoots Program, which has been referenced by several individuals, but this is a program that integrates crisis management professionals into police departments and is based in Eugene, Oregon. And that concludes the summary of public comment that we've received by email since the last time council discussed this topic.
Thank you, council president Hunt. So we'll start in with some questions. I see there's a few lined up. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My first question is a little, sort of in response to the issue that was raised from the, one of our public commenters tonight, and that was to take more time and not to rush. And I'm not saying that, I'm not suggesting that we are rushing this, but I was thinking about this earlier today, the plan for short term, medium term, and long term, and then it was mentioned, it seemed to me like all of those are actually relatively, all the action here, actions here are in a relatively short period of time, and it's about 18 months. And as I did a little bit of research, and I know we don't have a definition of short term, medium term, and long term, I am concerned that we have a fairly long list of items to complete here within a relatively short period of time, and I'm wondering if there is anything that the administration knows of right now, particularly in the short term and medium term, that will displace other work?
Yeah, a couple of questions, couple of questions in there then. One about the 18-month timeframe, and the other one is if there would be any work that would be displaced by moving these items as quickly as they're proposed?
Yep.
Okay. City administrator Bob Kwitz?
You know, first regarding the 18-month timeframe, I think it's the administration's feeling that we need to continue to move on this issue. 18 months is a short period of time, but there is certainly time to work on things. I think we got some feedback from the community and some council members about moving some of the items around, putting a couple of them on to the more longer-term track, and so we're agreeing with those recommendations. The biggest piece of this, I think, in the, in the medium term is regarding the budget, and we have already been working on those issues now, recognizing that the budget's coming to you on September 29. Monica Nigrela, our human services coordinator, has already been working and been charged with coming up with some plans, which she has been able to do, and the administration is reviewing those plans right now. So I think thus far, we've been able to manage through this without displacing a lot of work. There certainly are some issues for the police department that they will need to continue to work on, and talking with the chief Bearbaum, a lot of that falls, I think, on his shoulders, and some of this falls on my shoulders. The work of our city equity team, they had already geared up for work there, and Lauren Knox of our human resources department happens to be on the call for the next items, but I think if the council would like to get into more detail there, I think she could speak to that. But I think at the end of the day, it's the administration's feeling these are all important issues, and we want to make sure that we can do this in a responsible way. We think the 18-month timeframe is a responsible approach to this, will certainly keep the council apprised. There will be some dollars needed for the training, and so that will become part of the budget discussion, and I think if we need additional time, we will come back to you. But one of the things that the mayor said, I think we heard loud and clear, is there's a desire that we pivot, that we realize that we can do better with some of our services, be more equitable, more supportive to some members of our community, and as far as I'm concerned, that's a priority, and we will do our level best to make it happen.
Councilmember Goodman, did that answer your question?
Yes, and you can tell from the, from my question that I'm a little bit concerned about the timeframe. My second question is regarding the human services, evaluate resident review of equity and human services initiatives. It's a, it's a fairly big topic just embedded in this one, and I'm concerned that this is not necessarily what the volunteer members of our humans and human services commission signed up for, and so maybe I've missed this somewhere, but have we checked in with the human services commission, and can somebody follow up with that? And if I missed it, I apologize.
City administrator Bob Kwitz?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I think I will phone a friend, Monica Nigrela, who staffs the commission, is with us here tonight. And as I mentioned before Monica chimes in, councilmember Walsh and I had a good conversation earlier this afternoon, and I think her point was very well-taken, that even though we've made some changes on the breadth and scope of what we were asking of the human services commission, the timeframe was awfully tight, and so we're recommending this evening that we go along with councilmember Walsh's suggestion of moving that to the more long term. So at some point, Madam Mayor, if there's a motion, we can make sure that's included. But in the meantime, Monica, would you like to comment on where the commission is and any conversations they've had about this?
Yes, thank you very much. My name is Monica Nigrela. I'm the human services coordinator. So the human services commission had two meetings in July. As some of you may know, we are currently reviewing the 2021, 2022 human services grants, and in both of those meetings, we touched base with the commission about the equity action plan. They had a chance to provide some feedback, and actually, some of the feedback is already reflected in the action plan that you see tonight. And as far as timeline, our process will be, and will be to finalize the human services grants review in August, so actually, we have a meeting next week to finalize those, so then we can integrate them in the budget. And then we were planning on taking September, October, November, and December to work on the equity action plan and review that. We started some planning process to invite some community members and leaders from the black community to the meetings in September and October. So, so far, that's what we have, and so, yes, we've been including the commission in this input.
Thank you.
Councilmember Goodman, did you have any other questions?
No.
Thank you. And I move down to deputy council president Ray.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Chris Ray. Can you hear me? I'm just a little bit paranoid right now.
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you for checking.
Thank you. Two, two questions. So, looking forward to seeing the 2021 budget in the end of September. For the short and medium term items that are going to be implemented this year before the new budget takes effect, do we have an idea what, if any, budget impact there will be associated with that?
City administrator Bob Kwitz?
I'm at the wrong one. Sorry about that. Now I'm going to be paranoid. You know, much of this is, you know, beginning processes. The police department budget and operations review is already underway. The, there's policy reviews. We're looking on the equity training, both citywide and for the police department to identify that training and come up with a budget number, and so that would be done beginning, would be, the training would begin likely in '21. The school resource officer, I think I've touched on, the city council, police department information sharing, that's an opportunity for the city council to spend some more time at the department. The citywide equity training curriculum is something we're doing in-house with the staff committee. The evaluate resident review of equity and human services initiatives, I think you've heard Monica on her first steps with that. And then the citywide human services staffing contracting is already something that's underway and will be part of the '21 budget. So I don't know that there's any additional out-of-pocket dollars. The city council training that we're doing, that'll be an out-of-pocket expense, and we're still finalizing the cost on that. That will be, I don't know if Lauren Knox, who's on the line, has a specific dollar amount, but I think that's a couple thousand dollars that we're looking at for that training. So I think that may very well be the only out-of-pocket training we'll see in '20, and we have resources to cover that training for the city council. Lauren, I see you turned your camera on. Did you have anything else to add?
Yeah, we expect council training this year to be around just a thousand dollars for a four-hour training essentially, and then more if council decides to do a second or third training.
Deputy council president Ray, did that answer your question?
Yeah, that was great. Thank you, and Lauren has a halo. It's really great. Second question is around tracking progress. We have a lot of things on the short and medium term agenda around this initiative, and I really appreciate the bringing it back in the year with our status report, but how are we going to be tracking, moving all of these things forward? It's just, it's a full agenda, so I wonder if you thought about how, how you're going to stay on top of that?
Madam Mayor, deputy council president Ray, I think we're getting pretty good as a staff of providing the council updates on projects and initiatives, and so my, my plan would be to come up with a similar spreadsheet that you're seeing with the citywide work plan as well as capital improvement projects. We're proposing a quarterly update, and so we would likely fold that into a document with other quarterly updates we provide to the council.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, deputy council president Ray. Next up is councilmember Hall. Next up is Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Councilmember Hall. I just had a quick clarifying question for fearless city administrator. What did you say earlier about the school board, their meeting later this month, they're doing a retreat later this month to discuss SROs? Is that correct?
Councilmember Hall, members of the council, in my last conversation with the superintendent and I, if I'm not mistaken, and Deputy Counsel President Ray and Council President Hunt can confirm this, we did raise the issue at that meeting. And I think it was at that point that they indicated that they had an annual retreat where they talk about policy questions, district wide policy questions. And it was their intention to have this on that agenda. I have not spoken with the superintendent since that meeting and that was what, a month ago, perhaps? Council President, Deputy Council President, six weeks ago. And so my, they've obviously had a very full plate themselves at the school district. But again, school's not in session. I think, again, our commitment is to continue to follow up with the school district and have some discussion. There'll be budget implications for us with the school resource officers since that is funded in part by the city and part by the district. If that's going to change or not go forward, that will have budget implication for us. So it's every intent to get this, get some clarity, have some community public discussion on that during the course of the fall, so before the budget's adopted, we know where we're heading in that direction.
That was my only question right now, Mayor Polly. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. Council President Hunt?
Thank you, this is Council President Hunt. I had a question about the Human Services feedback. So right now we have a step where the Human Services Commission will be reviewing and presumably they might have some feedback for us or feedback on the plan, recommended changes on the plan, perhaps additions. I, I wondered how that will work. Will there be an opportunity to make changes or how would we be able to make changes to incorporate? If we were to adopt now, how would we incorporate their feedback?
Madam Mayor, Council President Hunt, I think this is a living document. I have proudly been your city administrator, not even a year yet, but one thing that I have heard many, many times from you is the frustration about documents getting adopted and sitting on shelves. And so I do not see this being that such document. I think if all of this becomes very fluid, I think we will continue to focus certainly on the budget as we're moving forward with that over the next six weeks, policies and procedures. If there is additional feedback that warrants changes to this, great. One of the charges in this plan is to ask them about oversight. And if they feel comfortable being an oversight group, you know, what's the parameters of that? If they don't feel comfortable and there should be a different kind of group, what might the parameters of that be? So I anticipating there being a lot of communication back from them over the course of the next several months and we'll come back to the council. And, you know, I think it's the mayor's plan and if she feels it's appropriate to make a change or, you know, have a discussion with the council, we'll certainly do that. But the bottom line is it's an action plan. It's not a strategic plan, it's not a plain old plan, it's an action plan. And I was very thoughtful on the mayor's part to say that this is something we're going to actually get done, we're going to move forward.
Council President Hunt, did you have additional questions?
That was my question for now, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Walsh?
Thank you, this is Councilmember Walsh. So I appreciate you saying that the plan can be added to if we're hearing something from the Human Services Commission or something else comes up. My concern at this time is that we're making commitments that we might not be able to fit in, in a timeline. So with the use of the school resource officers, I understand that the school district is very busy. I'm concerned what is going to happen if, if we get down to our budget time and we haven't been able to have a conversation with them? Could we talk about what that looks like? I mean, are we putting ourselves into a position where we're basically saying we're going to make a unilateral decision about our funding of school resource officers?
City Administrator Bob Quitz?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Walsh, I don't think it's unilateral decision. I think it really comes down to a police resource issue and I think there will be lots of discussion by the council during the budget process about police resources. We have a school resource officer today. Schools have been closed since March. We have redeployed that position to do other, to do other work. Will be continued to be redeployed to do other work in the fall while the schools remain closed. So if the, the school district decides they wish to keep this moving forward, they may very well ask the question about funding since they have not had a school for a school resource officer to be at since last March and don't know when that will be. We want to be mindful to keep the staff police resource. So I think those are all to do's for the administration over the next six, eight weeks to have those discussions and then come back with a recommendation for the council to consider. You know, a little bit of an aside with the budget, there are about 20 positions that are currently in the budget that were, that were frozen and not filled. And then 20, 23 positions in the budget that were vacated in order to balance. So there's about 43 positions in the budget currently that are not funded. And the proposal by the administration will be to address those 43 positions. They'll either be funded or they won't be funded. This idea of not funding positions is likely not going to be a major part of the proposed '21 budget. So the police department has some other issues separate and apart from this action plan and separate and apart from the school resource officer that the council's going to have to grapple with. So we'll do our best to lay those out as clearly and concise as possible. And, you know, we'll do our best also to have some resolution from this school district of this issue.
Councilmember Walsh, thank you for that question. This is the mayor. We're definitely going to work in unison with the school district. However, I realize it may make you feel uncomfortable as you know, budget's also coming. But you all managed the pandemic this year and you didn't affect that either. So I'm sure we'll get through this one. I think the question that we want to help answer with the school district is what was the role of the SRO original? What is the role that the school district feels they need today as we look at all of our officers and decide how we might be able to redeploy our resources to best provide public safety in our community? And so the conversations are just going to overlap. But that was a great question. Did you have any additional questions?
I do. So the other question I had, going back to the Human Services Commission and possibly calling in on Monica on this, I'm, as I, as Wally has mentioned, I talked to him earlier about the concern that it looks like we're saying we're going to get a recommendation back from the Human Services Commission by the end of December. And I frankly think that's a very, very rushed timeline. And so I'm wondering, Monica, you said that you've got it scheduled out so that September through December, sorry, that's my cat, is going to be talking about the equity proposal. I'm wondering what did the commission do in September through December of last year that we are missing out on if that's the case?
Monica?
Good question. You caught me off guard a little bit just because there have been so many things happening in the last few months that I have a hard time thinking about what was happening last month this year or in September. However, and now that I have a moment to pause, so typically, so we have two years, we have the granting year and then the off year. So usually, so last year, the commission took time to visit nonprofit organizations that we fund and also preparing for the funding process, therefore looking at what worked last year, what didn't work, what can we do to improve the process? So that kind of work was happening last year. And so this year it would be just finalizing the Human Services Grants and getting ready for contracting season and so forth, so.
Okay. So I guess my thought there is I don't want to promise something that might end up taking longer to produce a very thorough result. And so I'm concerned about putting that in the medium term and telling the community we're going to have this proposal back since I think a lot of this long-term plan hinges on some of those recommendations and the thoughtfulness of the Human Services Commission. So my thought to Wally earlier was can we say that we are starting the conversation in the medium term and will have results in that long-term that will dictate the, or will contribute to the thought process there? So I'm not sure what the other council members think about that, but that was kind of one of those ideas.
Thank you. Councilmember Walsh, did you have additional questions?
Additional comments, but not questions. So maybe I'll hold off until everybody has spoken and come back.
Great. I just want to check in with Councilmember De Michelle, who was going to switch to a call in. Councilmember De Michelle, are you with us? Unfortunately, she has been having technical difficulties this evening. I'm looking in the chat box to see if there's anybody else who has questions. If not, we can move into a discussion and potentially a motion. So just checking to see if anybody else has got their hand raised. We will then start with Councilmember Walsh for some comments.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. So first I want to say I applaud our city for coming to this idea, saying we're going to listen to the community. We are willing to take this on when many of the other communities around on the east side haven't gotten to this point or just kind of dealing with the pandemic, we're willing to push through. And so I very much appreciate that. I agree with so many of these things that are presented here. I think they are all point of order?
Yeah, I'm just gonna, if this is the mayor, if it's okay, Councilmember Walsh. Councilmember Merz, you want to talk about a point of order?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I don't believe we go to discussion of the merits of a bill until the bill has been presented.
Good point, thank you. If someone cared to make a motion. Council President Hunt?
I would like to make a motion.
Please proceed.
I'll move to adopt, or move to endorse the Issaquah Police Accountability Equity and Human Services Action Plan as presented.
Deputy Counsel President Ray?
Yeah, this is Chris Ray. I'll second that motion.
So it's been moved and seconded. Thank you, Councilmember Merz. Let's go back to Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. I will come back to Councilmember Walsh. So my concern at this point is merely that the items that are listed in the short and medium and long term, really from my perspective, look at reform. They look like individual piecemeal items that are talking about training and reporting and things like that. And I think the period of our time right now calls not for reform, which has been done before at many other police departments, but it calls for reimagining. And so my only question becomes, is that something that we are willing to look at as a city? Are we waiting for the Human Services Commission to present that idea? And if it comes up, is it something that we're willing to take on and, and ask about? Because I don't see that in here. And I talked to city administrator Bob Quitz earlier. It's his perspective that he sees some of that in these individual items, but as I'm reading it, I'm not seeing a reimagining. I'm seeing a piecemeal reform, which I think is a step, but not the step that I think I've heard other council members and myself express and the community express. And so that's my concern with this. That's not saying I'm against creating this plan and going forward, only that I hope that it does not stop merely at reform. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. Councilmember Merz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Merz. So, so 30 years ago, Ken Burns in the Civil War documentary, for me, the most powerful moment was near the end when historian Barbara Fields said that civil war wasn't really over. It shocked me when I heard this, but she said, "You can say there's no such thing as slavery, we're all citizens. But if we're all citizens, then we have to ask to, then we have to ask to do to make sure that that too is not a joke. If some citizens live in houses and others live on the street, the civil war is still going on. It's still to be fought and regrettably, it can still be lost." I've thought about that quote many times over the last six months. And it seems to me that we as leaders have heard a clear and call of our residents and our neighbors and our friends, near and far, to do what we can as befit our station to help heal these long festering wounds. I'm extremely proud of this plan. Often when a body is asked to urgently address a situation, there is a tug of war between the tactical and the strategic and the best and the good. And what I really like is that by separating things into near-term, more tactical things we can do right away that are easily agreed upon and more longer-term strategic things that take more consideration, we've, we've, we've addressed both ends of the spectrum. This is, I feel, a rapid, thoughtful and brave response, really a lightning rod that a lot of cities have been avoiding thus far. We did a comparison around cities and Issaquah was already running when some other cities were metaphorically still getting their pants on. And it felt good. We've, we've created a charge to come up with solutions to problems, but not prescribing those solutions. And I'll give an example as the police department budget and operations review. We say to consider body cameras, but we don't say go implement body cameras. We want solutions to make our community feel more safe and be more safe. And I believe that this action plan encompasses both the easy things and the path to the hard things. And so I'm extremely excited to be supporting this bill this evening. Additionally, I've talked about this plan with some of my friends that are people of color and they love that Issaquah is, is moving this way. My friends have universally said they think it's a pragmatic response to a difficult set of problems. We've heard tonight that it doesn't go far enough for some people, it goes way too far for other people. But I feel extremely comfortable supporting it this evening and I thank the administration for coming up with such a thoughtful bill in such a timely fashion to such an urgent cry from our community and communities across the nation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Merz. It looks like Council President Hunt has a question.
Thank you, this is Council President Hunt. I do have a question, which is, and I thought of this question listening to Councilmember Walsh's comments. And the question is about what does it actually mean to endorse the plan? What is, what is the word endorse? Usually we would adopt, but in this case we're endorsing the mayor's plan.
Maybe I'll start, this is the mayor, and then hand it off to Wally if I don't do a great job at this. This is an action plan and not a strategic plan. So under, you know, many situations, either required by code or required by practice, we'll bring a plan for adoption by the council because that's required. This is not a, that kind of document. What it is, is it's a work plan, a list of tasks and items that we're going to go through with our commissions and our department in order to begin to address and identify the action, the, the work that we need to do, the work that we want to do. And so I think because the council has been involved in this difficult year and talking with and listening to residents of all different backgrounds and the struggles that they've had with the pandemic, with their economic well-being and with the social injustice and inequities, that it didn't seem appropriate that we would just do this within the police department or I prefer to say within our public safety providers, which is both police and fire at this point in time and to some degree Swedish hospital. We all work in partnership and we have to go through this together. It just felt like it needed to come to the council as a, an opportunity for the council to comment to the community about their support for this important work. Administrator Bob Quitz, did you want to add to that?
No, ma'am.
Oh, there you go. Okay. Do you also have a comment at this time or are you going to come back later on, Council President Hunt?
I do have a comment.
Great.
So this is Council President Hunt. Firstly, I think that I also applaud- Firstly, I think that I also applaud the administration for creating an action plan for having actions in the short term as well as medium term and long term. To me, it looks like a timeline that is possible. We will see with the budget what that looks like in the budget. I think that it's important to recognize that we've had so many comments from members of our community that are specifically already on the budget, which is different than at least my past years on council. And so I really appreciate that members of the community have looked to our budget allocation, our allocation of resources as a way to give us feedback on the outcomes that they want for their community. And we've heard, as I mentioned when I was summarizing the email comments, we have heard from members of the community that want to decrease funding for police, increase funding for police, and keep funding for police the same. We've heard all three of those. And I hope that we will continue to have this level of engagement on the budget with people providing their comments and their arguments of why things should be funded. Because in the end, the budget is really our most powerful way of defining what we want to see in the city, what we want to change, and how we want to do that. I will very much look forward to hearing in our budget conversations how this plan will be implemented with the budget. I very much take to heart the comments that we heard about the human services budget in general being inadequate. I think that we should consider that, and we should think about how we can better support the human services needs in our city as we go into budgeting, recognizing, of course, that this is a difficult budget year. But I do believe we've been asked to pivot. I also, just lastly, I appreciate that this is both about the police as well as a broader conversation around equity. A lot of our comments have focused on police, but I think there's a lot more conversations to be had around the rest of the way that we operate as a city in terms of equity. I have started reading just the very beginning about The Color of Law, which is a book about how inequity has been continued through a number of different land use practices. And I think that there's a lot of things that we could look at about how we can address equity throughout the city. I'm looking forward to the council training, and I will be supporting this plan and following our progress in this. And I also appreciate that it's a living document, because I think we will have work to do and things to add.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. Next up is Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. This is Councilmember Zach Hall. I'll just start by echoing Council President Hunt's comments on the budget, and I'll save my own comments, as they were very similar. You know, like Councilmember Marts, I also had a number of quotes on my mind lately that I want to share with you, because I believe they so perfectly capture the moment that we find ourselves in, in our community, within the nation. The country demands bold, persistent experimentation. It is common sense to take a method and try it. If it fails, admit it frankly and try another. But above all else, try something. And to improve is to change, to perfect is to change often. So in my mind, this action plan, it doesn't need to be perfect yet. But what's important now is that we simply begin, and that we continue to look for opportunities to perfect and to change often. I agree that we should be realistic about our timeline. I agree that this action plan in ways is a function of reform. But I'm also more than comfortable admitting frankly that we need to change course a year from now, or six months from now, or next month, or tomorrow. Hopefully, it's not tomorrow. But I'm happy to support this action plan tonight, and I would just invite all of us to continue to look for ways where we can change and perfect.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. Deputy Council President Ray, I hope you've got a few good quotes up your sleeve.
Hi. Thank you, Mayor Pauli. This is Chris Ray. I'm sorry, I will only, I will disappoint. I just have my own. I really liked this action plan. I think it is a necessary first step. I thought it was very thoughtful. I thought that it was very responsive to the request that we made of the administration to bring us back a short term, medium term, long term. Thank you, Councilmember Marts, for that inspiration when we did that. I also am very excited about this being a living document that will change and will be added to, and we will find new ways to make it better, and we will embrace Councilmember Hall's call for continuous improvement. I think, too, I'm just going to thank everybody on the council for this one. To pick up on Councilmember Walsh, we do have an opportunity here to reimagine policing and to reimagine public service and to reimagine public safety. But I believe that as we move forward with this action plan, and we get bold, and we start to look for new things, and we look at how we might reimagine how we serve the people of Issaquah, it's going to require broad involvement, active engagement, and consistent participation. I know that we want to take advantage of our Human Services Commission, because this is something that is near and dear to them. But in listening to Council President Hunt, talking about the broadness of inequities, and its land use, and its parks, and its police, and it is human services, and that possibly what we really need to do here is take a step back and say, we need something new that really will look at the inequities that are in our society from all of these different perspectives, and provide that broad involvement, different points of view, actively engage with the community, and give people an opportunity to be consistently involved in helping us craft what the future vision for not only policing, but for making Issaquah the welcoming and just society that the mayor started this discussion with. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Council President Ray. Councilmember De Michele, I apologize that you missed the question and answer piece, but we see you now and we can hear you, which is great. So you are up.
Thank you. Yes, I had a little internet issue at my place, so thank you for accommodating that. I too am proud of this document, proud to be here tonight, proud to be part of this conversation. I think it is, we've got a work plan in front of us that allows us to focus on dialogue with our community on many different levels, going deep into a subject where a lot of people have not wanted to talk about it, have not wanted to address it. And we have a action plan that makes us, helps us, pushes us forward to talk about many tough subjects over the next 18 months, and I appreciate that part of the plan. I want to thank Mayor Pauli for accepting my suggestion to add the wording or restore the wording back into the Section 10. I wanted to share a couple of conversations I had today with various people. One was with a man who is heading up a new group on the East Side, made up of Black leaders who are wanting to do a lot of advocacy work with different municipalities. The organization is called The Right to Breathe, and I don't want to speak for him, so I will just say that his review of the work plan was that he praised it very, very highly, and said that Issaquah is quite ahead of the curve here. So I thought those were really good comments. The other conversation I had this afternoon was with a young woman who reached out to me. She's just starting her career in social work, and she had taken the time to review the plan as well. And she wanted to talk to me about several things, but the one thing I really wanted to bring forward tonight is, she said, if we talk about marginalized people, often one group that is ignored or overlooked are those who have mental illness or who have experienced mental illness. And so she urged us to include them in those conversations that we have about incorporating mental health counselors and behavioral health specialists into our police work. From their point of view, what is most helpful? How can we be the most helpful as we go through that discussion about integrating into police work, those specialties? I thought that was a really astute comment from one of our young members of our community. And then finally, I just wanted to talk a little bit about that integration of mental health specialists into the police department. That has been something that I've been a long advocate for, and believe that this will be a really profound change to the way we address problems in our community. There are many, many models about how to do that, and I hope that this will be a discussion that we take up again, that we bring a lot of voices to the table, a lot of expertise to the table, look at all the many models, and also what is going to work best for Issaquah. There are lots of ways to do it, and I think that we can, again, be leaders in this area if we continue to follow the path that we have, which is listen to our community, listen to the people who would be most affected by the decisions we make. So I too will be supporting this wholeheartedly, and I agree with others who have said, to me, it's a platform for us to dialogue and grow as we learn. And so it's not perfect, but that's okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michele. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Goodman here. I too will be supporting this plan, and I appreciate all of the hard work that has gone into it to date so far, particularly the administration and staff, and everybody who has paid attention and participated from the public. It's, I'm proud of this plan as well. One of the things that I like about it the most is that it's a measured plan, and that it's not just a knee-jerk response and identifying things that we are going to do just as a knee-jerk just because it feels good. The list here largely are items that need assessment and need further assessment, as specifically identified in the plan. We're not doing things like whacking budgets with random numbers just to say we did something, and I'm really glad we're not doing that. What we will be doing, from what I review, what I see in the document from my reading, is like I said, assessment and furthered assessment, to make sure that we specifically identify what particular problems we're trying to solve, and whatever actions we decide to take out of this plan, that they are actions that specifically solve the problems that we have identified, and that we are listening to the entire community. So I, again, I support it wholeheartedly. I agree that it appears to me that not only is Issaquah ahead of the curve, which I'm extremely proud of, but that I believe that we are going about it in a very responsible way. And so I want to, again, thank the mayor's office for all the work that you've done. So I will be supportive. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. I do have a question for the city clerk before we proceed, and that is, Councilmember Walsh had made a suggestion about a potential edit of moving a section of starting work at one point in time and providing a report at at a second point in time. Would she make a motion to amend the main motion to add that, or is that something? How would she go ahead and do that if she'd wanted to do that?
Is it something that you're agreeable to? Or then I would indicate, as you did with the other comment, on the change that Councilmember De Michele offered, that you would simply incorporate that in? If that's not your wish, then you could put it to the council.
Yeah, Councilmember Walsh, I think that's fine to, you know, begin our conversation, and maybe we'll finish it faster than you think, but at least there's some safety in there to get it done to a good point. So I'm in agreement with what you were proposing, so therefore, I don't think we need to do anything else. I'm going to look at the chat box to see if anybody else would like to comment, but all seven councilmembers had had at least a first chance. And if not, I will go back to, oh, Council President Hunt.
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I wanted to follow up on the discussion that we had earlier regarding the School Resource Officers, SRO. Councilmember, Council Deputy President Ray and I did meet with the school board representatives for their leadership on July 1st, and so we will be meeting with them again. But we absolutely welcome feedback from councilmembers on this topic so that we can go into that meeting being prepared, and so that we can represent council's views on that topic. So I think this will be an ongoing discussion, and perhaps we could discuss a good order at a different meeting, or you could get in touch with us. But definitely, we will be in touch with the school, and we will not be making a decision without working with the school, but also I want to make sure that we get feedback from council.
Thank you very much, Council President Hunt. I'll go back to the motion. It has been moved and seconded to endorse the Issaquah Police Accountability Equity and Human Services Action Plan. And they're going to look to the clerk for help here. There were a couple of minor amendments. Do I need to say that in the motion? Or no?
You can indicate that it was as presented and accepted by you.
As presented, okay, as presented and accepted. And I'll go back to the city clerk for a roll call vote.
Thank you. I'll start with Council President Hunt.
Aye.
Councilmember Marts?
Aye.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Councilmember De Michele?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I will unmute you if you'd like. There you are.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. That's only one time tonight. That's pretty good. Thank you. The next item of business on our special meeting agenda this evening is AB 8019, Memorandum of Understanding with Teamsters 117, Police Sergeants. And this is the first time that this item is before council. I'd like to invite Senior Human Resources Analyst Lauren Knox to make a presentation. Lauren will be jointly presenting this agenda bill and the next item on the agenda this evening, which is AB 8020. Welcome, Lauren.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. And let me just take a few moments to get the slides up. Okay. And Madam Mayor, do you mind confirming that you can see that?
Cannot see it yet, Lauren.
Okay, thank you.
Looks like it's coming up.
Okay, great. Okay, so as the mayor mentioned, my name is Lauren Knox, Senior Human Resources Analyst, and I have two items to present this evening. I'll present them jointly as they are related. Both are Memorandums of Understanding with Teamsters 117. Moving forward just a little bit, Teamsters 117 represents two unions in the city, police sergeants and police commanders. Our police sergeants' union has only five members, and our police commanders' union has only two members. So both very small, although that does not change our obligation to bargain in good faith with each unit separately. I will also just briefly mention that these are both law enforcement unions, and as we've talked with council about previously, that means that they're interest arbitration eligible. If anyone has, you know, questions about that, I'm happy to answer them. Or for members of the community, we presented on that topic on July 20th, if you'd like to view that presentation. So moving forward, both of these Memorandums of Understanding represent attempts to save costs in 2020. As the council is aware, we've been working with each of our employee groups to come up with cost-saving measures in 2020. And I think it was Councilmember De Michele who used this term, but shared sacrifices the idea to share the burden across all city staff so that we could save as many positions as possible. Council has previously approved similar Memorandums of Understanding and items for non-represented staff, AFSMI, which is our General Employees Union, and Teamsters 763, representing Public Works Operations. Our Police Officers Union, IPOA, took a wage freeze in 2020 in lieu of furloughs and concessions. And our Police Support Union opted to do a layoff instead of furloughs and concessions. And just very briefly, I'll explain what 457 is for anyone who might be watching. 457 is the governmental version of a 401K. And that comes up a few And that comes up a few times on this slide, so just to be explicit about that. Approval of these MOUs will represent participation in cost savings efforts from every employee group in the city. So, a brief description of each memorandum of understanding. For our police sergeants, the proposal is a furlough of 40 to 48 hours, depending on assignment, one rotation of furlough. A pause in 457 contribution matches through the end of this year. This group is eligible for a $300 a month match, and in exchange, two use-it-or-lose-it annual days to be used in 2021. The proposed memorandum of understanding with our police commanders' unit is just a little bit different, and represents an attempt to balance some staffing issues along with need to, I mean, I'll use the term pre-bargain some issues that we would normally bargain in the context of contract negotiations. So, for this group, we have 40 hours of furlough, 457 freeze through the end of the year, and then a few benefits changes that have our, the council has already seen and approved for non-represented staff. Those include elimination of hour-for-hour compensatory time to be replaced with use-it-or-lose-it management time, elimination of sick leave conversion to pay, elimination of education merit pay, and elimination of the orthodontia pool to be replaced with an orthodontia writer to the Delta Dental Plan. And that's largely what I have for you this evening, a very brief item. Administration does recommend approval of these memorandums of understanding to officially achieve cost savings measures from each employee group in the city. I don't think that's the metric that we were hoping to use this year for staffing, however that is where we are with the pandemic, and we appreciate the cooperation of our unions to get to this point. Human Resources will continue to bargain with these two new unions for 2021 and beyond contracts. Both of these unions were non-represented at the beginning of this year, and, you know, as of May for the sergeants, July for the commanders, were officially certified as unions. And they did receive, you know, the same wage increase and class comp adjustment that our non-represented staff received at the beginning of this year, so we anticipate that first contracts will likely be January 2021 and beyond. So, I will pause there if anyone has questions.
Thank you, Lauren. Thank you for the presentation, and also, like I mentioned in my mayor's report, I think a week ago, amazing amount of work that the very small team that we have that does human resources has really accomplished this year in August is quite amazing. I am not, at this point in time, seeing too many folks with questions, but I will go to the President Hunt to see if there is any emails that could be subject on this topic, and give people a chance to actually line up for questions. Council President Hunt?
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. We did not receive email comments on this agenda item.
Okay. At this point, I am not seeing a lot of comments or questions, or questions at least in the chat box. So, is anyone prepared to make a motion? Council President Hunt?
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I move to ratify the memorandum of understanding between the city and the Teamsters Local Number 117 Police Sergeants regarding furloughs and benefit concessions effective retroactively to August 1, 2020, and authorize the mayor to execute the memorandum of understanding.
Deputy Council President Ray?
This is Chris Ray. I second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Please let me know through the chat box if you have a comment. Seeing none, I will turn to the clerk for a roll call vote.
Thank you. I'll start with Councilmember Marts.
Somebody was pressing, I think I was pressing mute at the same time as somebody else, or unmute, rather. This is Councilmember Marts. Aye.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Councilmember DeMichele?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Council President Hunt?
Aye.
Thank you. The seven ayes.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. Checking in the chat box. Council President Hunt, do you care to make a motion?
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I would like to make a motion. I move to ratify the memorandum of understanding between the city and the Teamsters Local Number 117 Police Commanders regarding furloughs and benefit concessions effective upon execution of the memorandum of understanding by both parties, and authorize the mayor to execute the memorandum of understanding.
Deputy Council President Ray?
This is Chris Ray. I second that motion.
Is there any discussion? And I'll look to the chat box to see if anyone raises their hand. Council President Hunt?
Thank you. I just very briefly wanted to thank Lauren for the information that was presented, and also for her work to get these memorandums of understanding in place, and thank you to all the human resources staff for all of your work on this. Thanks.
That's very kind words. Thank you, Council President Hunt. Now, I'll go to the city clerk for a roll call vote.
Yes, thank you. I'll start with Deputy Council President Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Councilmember DeMichele?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Council President Hunt?
Aye.
Councilmember Marts?
Aye.
Thank you. That's seven ayes.
Thank you, city clerk. That passes unanimously. And the next item of business this evening is an executive session. This session this evening will be to discuss property acquisition per 42.30.110, Pren 1, Pren B. The item is expected to last 30 minutes. No action is anticipated to follow in open session. So, we will now recess into executive session at 8:05 PM, and I ask the city clerk to move anyone who's not part of the closed session to the virtual lobby, and those in the lobby are more than welcome to stay on the line until the meeting is reconvened.